Motion purposes only. Thank you all. And I will share my screen right now. Can you guys see my screen, okay? Yes, okay, great. All right. And for those of you who may be first time actually joining our Women Leads Toastmaster, I'll put our speakers on the side. All right. Thank you all for being patient. Women Leads Toastmasters is a newly chartered club and we, the LEAD stands for Leadership Empowerment Advancement and Diversity. And we offer top three things. One is to improve your public speaking through our bi-weekly themed based meeting. Now it starts from 6:45 to 8:15. And we also empower you through many of our weekly blog posts and workshops as well. And last but not least, learn through these workshops. We have many of the workshops you guys can find on our meeting page. This is our mission. We hope to provide a very safe platform for you to practice public speaking, build future leaderships, and also empower others, find your voice, and share ideas cross-culture. Our mission is to empower people like you. And you're seeing many of our leadership team and founding team members on the slide and also in the meeting here. So you're more than welcome to learn a little bit more about every single one of us on our About Us page, which I will include in the chat window right here. Okay, and yesterday, in case you guys weren't there, Megan actually did a really good marketing webinar and for the district and Women Leads Toastmaster was actually mentioned by one of the speaker. Apparently, we got distinguished in three months. How wonderful is that? So thank you all for being here today. And this is our theme for the evening, Personalized Communication. And I will, I always like to start with a quote, "Communication, the human connection is the key to personal and career success." In case you haven't navigated to our webpage yet, on our webpage, we actually have a meeting link right here where we included agenda and a couple other items, which I will send out the link momentarily after stop sharing screen. And if it's your first time meeting us, we do have meeting roles and responsibility listed also on the webpage for you to take a closer look at. And each of the role bearers will actually explain their roles as well. All right, now I will turn back to our Toastmasters of the evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Our theme for today is personalized communication. As Renee showed, the one thing that comes to my mind when I talk about personalized communication is connection. When we create the connection with the other person, it creates that magic. To create that magic, we need to have two things. The first thing is we need to understand who is at the other end we are trying to communicate with. The second thing, I know we are busy, but if we can take that extra time to make our communication that personalized to the person who is relevant at the other end, that makes the big difference. My inspiration for personalizing the communication is Megan. Whenever you see her emails, you can see she has personalized it to the person she's sending. It makes a huge difference. It makes a connection in my heart. So thank you, Megan. And I hope all of us can take the time and understand who is at the other end to make that connection. I'll start with the profile of the day. Our profiler of the day is Shobha Rao. Shobha, it's all you.
Thank you, Abhijit. Let me quickly share my screen. So I want to talk about two women leaders today. Most of you may not know who they are. The, these two women are from India where I'm, I work, that's my nationality, original nationality. So the reason why I call them pioneers is because they were first in many things that they did. Dr. Muthulakshmi Reddy. She was born in 1886 and she's called the unsung feminist of India. Imagine in 1907, when there were not many people, she was the first woman candidate in a medical college, a first woman house surgeon, first women legislator in British India, that too. And she led so many women empowerment activities. She was part of various organizations trying to make sure that women are uplifted in the society. She's, as I said, she's an educator, surgeon, lawmaker, social reformer. I mean, it's, I cannot just saw all her credentials because it's just too many. And the important thing, the reason why I came to know about her is because she started something called the Cancer Institute in southern India to serve underprivileged. This institute, she started in 1954. Now that brings me to my next woman leader, which is Dr. Shanta. She died just January at the ripe age of 93. She was the chairperson of the Cancer Institute. And in this institute, they give free care at least to 20% of the patients. And she joined this institute in 1955. And from 1955 till the day she died, she was literally in the institute campus. She was not married. She dedicated completely her whole life to cancer research and cancer cure and serving patients. She has gotten some highest civilian awards in India and she was awarded the Roman Magsesse Award, which is called the Nobel Prize of Asia in 2005. And she's also noted as Mother Teresa of South India. And her takeaway from teachers, from families, this is what she says, "From them, I learned the principle to give and not take." And she never took anything. I personally contribute a lot to this institute. I've been a volunteer for the past 15 years and I've met her a few times. She is my role model, my inspiration to serve humanity in general. I just hope you go back and read more about these two women. Back to you, Abhijit.
Thank you so much, Shobha. Shobha, thank you for sharing the profile of the inspirational ladies. One quote comes to my mind. Winston Churchill said, "We make a living with what we get. We make a life with what we give." Let me kick off our meeting with our role bearers. Our first role bearer is Karen Conwell. Karen, can you share the purpose of your role, please?
Tonight, I have the delight of being your general evaluator. So I will watch how the meeting progresses and I will sit here and take notes. And I have an evaluation team that helps me out and Abhijit's gonna introduce them. And then at the end of the meeting, I'll give you a summary of how everybody did. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Karen. Our grammarian for today is Renee Yau. Renee, can you share the word of the day?
Absolutely. All I can think about is food right now. So that's why I'm choosing the word I pick here. A person who takes particular pleasure in food and drink. For example, they see themselves as pedicures. I pick here, sorry. Delighting in food that is properly prepared. So I will encourage all of you guys to use the word and think about food and drink and having a good time tonight. And of course, I will also keep track of good usage and values to grammar and send grammar and send out a report towards the end. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Renee. Our counter for today is Sarah Tang. Sarah, can you share the purpose of your role, please?
Yes, my role is to count people's as and ums and filler words and any false starts that they have while they're speaking. And I'll let you know at the end how many you had.
Thank you so much, Sarah. Our timer for today is Samantha. Samantha, can you share the purpose of your role, please?
Yes. My role as the timer is to keep time for all the speakers to ensure that everyone speaks within their allotted time slot. And this will help ensure that the meeting runs on time. I have three colored backgrounds to help me do this. Green, which will flash when you have met your time requirement, yellow as a warning that you were close to reaching your allotted time, and red when you have reached the end of your allotted time. A 30-second grace time is granted at the end, at the end of the time allowed. For example, all of today's speeches are five to seven minutes. So green will be shown at five minutes, yellow at six minutes, and red at seven minutes. I will give my report at the end of the meeting. Back to you, Toastmaster.
Thank you, Samantha. Today, we have four speakers. Our first speaker is Su Jin Kim. Our evaluator is Priya. Priya, can you share the purpose of Su Jin's speech?
Su Jin is going to talk about motivational strategies, pathway, level one, evaluation and feedback. In this speech, Su Jin will share her experience of staying at home during the pandemic and how it led her to go inward and build resilience. Back to you, Toastmaster.
Thank you so much. Su Jin Kim, go inward when you can't go outside. Go inward when you can't go outside. Su Jin Kim.
Oh, Su Jin, I went to grocery shopping today. It took two hours and there is no toilet paper. March 17, 2020. I still remember the first conversation I had with my colleague on the first day of shelter in place. The streets were quiet, the schools were closed. I washed my hands many times at home, but still it seemed not enough. I felt hopeless in my tiny apartment. For many nights, I stayed awake thinking how long this will continue and worrying about the future, economy, job security, and my family's health and couldn't stop thinking many worst scenarios in my mind. So I studied listening to podcasts when I can't, and I couldn't sleep. It helped me stop thinking the chain of negative thoughts and opened up to many inspiring stories of startup founders who went near to bankruptcy, but continued doing what they believed in and eventually made it successful. Though this story has allowed me to see there is a light at the end of the tunnel, even though when I was at the darkest moment. Still, I was very exhausted and depressed occasionally because I was managing childcare and work while my husband is extremely busy with his new job. I, I, when I experienced anger, sadness, disappointment, frustration, after reflecting those feelings, I realized that what I'm lacking is love and care. So I wanted to talk to the people who care about me. So I scheduled some calls with my friends. It was great to connect with my high school friends, even we haven't talked to each other for a while. We shared our struggles, comforted each other, had a moment to laugh and feeling relaxed. In, in this conversation, I felt things are normal. The world is still the same and we are still human. After that, I wanted to understand my emotions and wanna, wanna know how I can have a strength and courage to manage difficult situations. So I joined the online coaching program. The five-week experience was life-changing. I realized that my fears are mostly around others' judgment, not instead of what I, what's important to me. Fear of failure and rejections by others were holding me back from trying new things and focusing on what I want to do. The self-awareening gave, gave me, made me take more actions and it gave me, gave me a courage to try new things. Joining the Toastmasters Club was on my to-do list for a while, but I was hesitant because I was afraid of being in front of many people, knowing that I would make a lot of mistakes. However, I learned that I cannot grow without failures and mistakes. I was able to have a courage to take connection and try. Staying at home more than a year was stressful and mentally challenging. But I'm grateful that it gave me an opportunity to go deeper inside of me and, and, and help me to get clarity on what motivates me. In the process, I gained, I gained, I gained the courage and vigilance to make a lemonade when many lemons are given in your life. So I'm ready to take, I'm ready to make more lemonade because I know that it is possible to turn sourness into happiness. Thank you. Back to you, back to you, Toastmaster.
Thank you so much, Su Jin. Thank you for sharing your vulnerability with us. Everyone, please take a moment to write the feedback for Su Jin's speech. I'm going to put a link, a Google form. Please, your feedback will be very important for Su Jin to take her speech to the next level. Timer, can you please give me a one minute of silence? Thank you, Samantha. Our next speaker is Deepa Shashadri. Our evaluator is Vicky Pan. Vicky, can you share the purpose of Deepa's speech?
Yes. Deepa is, Deepa's pathway is dynamic leadership. Her speech today is level two, Understanding Your Leadership Style. Her title is Leaders Are Not Born, Leaders Are Made. Research has proven that leadership is about one-third born and two-thirds made. How were Deepa's primary leadership style made? Deepa. Back to you, Toastmaster.
Thank you so much, Vicky. Deepa Shashadri. Leaders are not born. Leaders are made. Leaders are not born. Leaders are made. Deepa Shashadri.
Are leaders born or are leaders made? Now, why would I think about this question? So I'm in the dynamic leadership pathway, level two. And the very first project for that, for those of us who do not know, is to identify the leadership style. So what it does is we need to take a survey, which is consisting of, which consists of a lot of questions, which identifies your leadership style. So my leadership style, it turns out, is primarily democratic. And I scored extremely low on the bureaucratic form of leadership. That made me think, how did I become a democratic leader? Was I born with the democracy skills, being born in the largest democracy perhaps? Or was it made? I did some research and psychologists, and there have been a lot of such research, have proven that one-third of leaders are born or one-third of what makes up a leader is what they are born with. And two-thirds is what they are made. But how was a leader, how is a leader made? A leader is made through acquiring skills. And how does one acquire skills? Through experience, self-development and training. Self-development and training, no, I have not done any of that to become a leader. So that just leaves down with experience. And so I started thinking, what in my experience made me the democratic leader that the survey calls me out to be? My very first job, we were a group of five to six new fresh graduates joining a startup. And our manager was a first-time manager. And the very first project that we were told, we were all huddled into a room. And we were said, this is the big picture feature and these are the subfeatures that go into it. Let's prioritize them. And so each one of us in that room got a platform to express our opinion on why a feature should be made and why it should make it to the release and why the feature should not make it to the release. There were a lot of discussions back and forth. But what it did give each one of us was an opportunity for participation. And I think very early on, having been exposed to such a platform where people are engaging in discussions, everybody's opinion is getting counted, ended up in each one of us having a higher commitment level. And all of us, mind you, this is six freshly, fresh graduates, stayed in that company for six years. And a big achievement in my mind, if you think it was the prime of the boom, software boom. So which has to go something, which has to say something about job satisfaction, I guess. So that is perhaps why I scored high on democratic leadership because in my experience, that works the best. But then, why did I score so low on bureaucratic leadership qualities? So bureaucratic leadership is essentially when somebody engages in a top-down interaction. There's a lot of disciplining and you're demanding, and somebody demands compliance from you. Does it always not work? No, it should work, right? Because think of yourself, if you were to be working in a factory line kind of a work where routine tasks are performed over and over again. Each one needs to understand and follow some certain procedures. Absolutely. I think the leader needs to demand compliance. But in a software company, which is where my technical expertise lies, would bureaucracy work? Again, I went back and thought of this one particular instance where my manager or my supervisor would come and check up on me every single day. And for somebody who is otherwise a highly motivated person, this constant checking brought in self-doubt and self-worth issues. And I ended up quitting the job in three months. So clearly, my experience or my positive experience in a democratic style of leadership and a negative experience in a bureaucratic style of leadership defines my leadership skills. And so if leaders are truly made, then I am made from the democratic style of leadership and not from the bureaucratic style of leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Deepa. I'm thinking of bugging you and asking you, when are you giving your next speech? Thank you so much for sharing your stories, Deepa. Everyone, please take a minute to give feedback to Deepa. Timer, please give me a one minute of silence. Thank you, Samantha. Our next speaker is Helen Josephine. Our evaluator is Madhumita. Madhumita, can you share the purpose of Helen's speech?
Thank you, Toastmaster. Helen is in the presentation mastery pathway. This is her level two, Effective Body Language Speech. The speech time is five to seven minutes. The title of her speech is Learning to Share. Back to you, madam. Back to you, Toastmaster.
Thank you so much, Madhumita. Helen Josephine. Learning to Share. Learning to Share. Helen Josephine.
Good evening, fellow Toastmasters and guests. I come from a really large family. I have four brothers and two sisters. And that means we all learn to share and to speak up for ourselves. One time at dinner, all six of us were sitting around the table, talking about our day at school, our friends. The chatter was so loud, you can hear it down the street. My sister, who was six at the time, pounded on the table, "When is it my turn to talk?" As you can imagine, we weren't epicures, but we got a lot of food. If you didn't finish your dinner, my brothers would reach across with their fork and just take that food right off your plate. There were no leftovers. All food was fair game. My kitchen disasters were always welcome because they ate everything. If a cake fell, no problem. If the pudding didn't quite mix right, they ate it anyway. And if I put too much salt in the chicken, they didn't care. I was the second child and the first daughter, which means, of course, I was the second mom to all my siblings. That meant I got to change a lot of diapers and feed a lot of babies. One of my earliest memories was when my brother Jamar was born. I was two and a half and my brother Tom was three. A baby, one of our toys come to life. We would hang on to the, his crib and look to see what he was doing. And then we would call out to mom, "Mom, Jamar is hungry. Mom, Jamar is crying," as if she didn't know. "Mom, can Jamar come play with us?" He was much more interesting when he was old enough to sit up in the high chair. Then we could share our food with him. We would mash up peas and feed him in his mouth. Tear up bread. He loved bananas, animal crackers and little Cheerios. His cheeks were so chubby and he always had a smile on his face. He just reached out his hand, he put a little food in and he eat it up. But my mom was worried. She thought he had developmental problems. Why? He wasn't talking. Well, he was communicating just fine with us. Well, he was communicating just fine with us. He would just point to a toy and we would bring it to him. Or point to a banana and we'd bring it to him. We knew when he was happy, we knew when he was hungry. He didn't really need to talk at all. A few weeks later, he did start talking in complete sentences. And he hasn't stopped talking since. Then my brother Matthew was born. That sort of changed the dynamics a bit. There were now three boys and only one girl. They liked to roughen tumble a lot, get in the dirt. They even took ants and put them in a row and then used a magnifying glass to fry them. It smelled awful. They would sit in the backseat of the car and poke me with their elbows, my mom couldn't see. And I would say, "Ouch, good poking me," then I would get into trouble. So, when I was about eight, my mom decided I needed to learn how to defend myself. I wasn't too sure about this. I didn't like hitting them. I didn't like hitting anybody. She made me go outside with my brothers. She told me I had to learn how to defend myself and hit back. Oh, I was crying. I was so upset. I hit them hard. She said, "Hit them harder." I hit again. They were laughing. They thought it was so funny. They were tough guys. I was no way I could hurt them. They couldn't quite understand why I was so upset. They didn't mean to hurt me. Their poking, elbowing, hitting my arms was just their way of saying, "Hey, you're one of us." My brothers have grown up to be gentle souls. In caring for the environment and caring for each other and the planet. The three of them, the oldest, could have been drafted to be in the army in Vietnam. All three of them chose to be conscientious objectors instead and do community service instead of serving in the army. Well, it was a fine time with all those kids. We did learn to share, we did learn to speak up for ourselves. And it's a better place for having been part of that big family. Mr. Toastmaster.
Thank you so much, Helen. Helen, I can relate to that speech because I do have a younger sister, so we have gone through our same kind of ups and downs. Thank you. Everyone, please take a moment, take a minute to give feedback to Helen. Timer, please give me a minute. Thank you, Timer. Our next speaker is Lakshmi. Her evaluator is Khushboo. Khushboo, can you share the purpose of Lakshmi's speech?
Sure. Thank you, Bijit. Lakshmi's pathway is leadership development, level one. She's doing her researching and presenting project today. Her title is "No Tree by Diction." And introduction is like humans plant to have their own characteristics. Today Lakshmi will be presenting a fun fact about very common fruit tree. Over to you, Lakshmi.
Thank you so much, Khushboo. Lakshmi is, this is her actually second speech after her second place winning at the division contest. Lakshmi Shridhar, "No Tree by Diction." "No Tree by Diction," Lakshmi Shridhar.
About hundred and fourteen million tons of this fruit was produced in the world in the year 2017. It is the third most popular fruit behind tomatoes and apples. I chose to speak about this plant and fruit because it happens to be my favorite fruit. And I have literally gone bananas over it since childhood. I'm told that as an infant, the very first day I could climb onto the dining table. I reached for the fruit bowl, picked up these fruits, peeled them and ate the flesh of four of these fruits, even though I didn't have a single tooth in my mouth. Obviously, you would have guessed by now that I'm talking about a banana. Today, I'm going to be talking about a few fun facts about this fruit and the plant as a whole. Banana tree is actually a chit-chatting plant. Hence, no tree by diction. It is a distant cousin of ginger and turmeric. These are herbs that flowers and grow from rhizomes. Banana stem that you see is not the stem. It is actually tightly wrapped leaves. So, it is called a pseudostem. The rhizome from which the plant grows is the stem. Luckily, the flower is a flower and the fruit is a fruit. But again, it is not the typical kind of fruit or flowers that you see around. The purple conical thing that grows between the leaves and resembles a bud is not the flower, but the flowers are inside these purple buds. The first few rows of the flowers that grow into bananas are the female flowers. Then you see the male flowers enclosed inside the bud. The female flowers fruits even before the sterile pollen is produced. So, a banana develops without fertilization and has no seeds in them. Long, long ago, a banana did have lot of inedible seeds in there. But the clever cultivators developed this fruit with tiny immature black seeds. Even today, if you go to Southeast Asia, you can still find wild bananas with seeds in them. So, the common banana plant that is used for cultivation cannot be grown from a seed. It grows only from the rhizome. It's a perennial plant as it keeps growing again and again from the rhizome. But the plant dies after the harvest. This plant has lot of use. In India, we use every part of this plant. We generally avoid using the rhizome and keep it for future growths. But that too is used in the preparation of Ayurvedic medicines. The ripe banana, which is a good source of energy and aids digestion, can be eaten as it is or can be made into lovely halva, kheer or a sweet that resembles muffins. I am an epicure, right? Raw banana cannot be eaten raw. It has to be cooked. The banana flower and the inside of the pseudostem, this part can be eaten as it is or it can be cooked. Choice is yours. Banana peel helps relieve itching and inflammation. My grandma didn't spare the peels. She cooked that too. These peels are good source of nitrogen N, phosphorus P and potassium K, N, P, K. Any gardeners over here? They will know it is a good fertilizer. I was talking about the banana pseudostem, right? The fiber from this is used to make robes, mats and sometimes even clothing. Once, my husband's cousin told me. In India, we do true recycling. In villages, people still use a banana leaf as a throwaway plates to serve food. For small snacks, we use the purple brat as bones. The washed leaves and the brats are then fed to the cows. Next day, you are in for a good quality cow dung, which can be used as manure for plants, including the banana plant. The cycle keeps repeating. So, don't take a banana lightly. This hundred calories seedless fruit is highly nutritious. And the plant is of immense use to humans. So next time you see a banana at the grocery store. Remember that this came from the very first and the last batch of fruits produced by this selfless plant, not tree, which knows only to kill. Back to you, Toastmaster.
Abhijit, you muted.
Thank you, Lakshmi. Thank you for sharing that story about banana. You know, when we do a long run or a hike, bananas are always there with us. Thank you for sharing that story with us. Timer, can you please give me one minute? Everyone, please give feedback to Lakshmi. Thank you, Timer. Now let's go to the fun section of the meeting, table topics. Let me introduce our table topics leader, Megan Myers. Megan, it's all you.
Thank you so much, Abhijit. Alright, so let's give a hand of thanks to our Toastmaster leading us through another great meeting. Tonight, we are talking about personalized communication. What a great theme. Communicating with others has the assumed goal of connecting with others. Of building relationships and understanding. Personalizing your communication effectively brings you and your listener together. Creating a sharing of knowledge, of space and of experience. Let's look at what creates personalized communication. We will start with remembering a time you deeply connected with a stranger. Perhaps you were both epicures. Have you experienced suddenly deeply connecting with someone just through conversation? Please share a time when you deeply connected with a stranger and how you could recreate that experience. Samantha.
A time I deeply connected with a person. I think that would have to be when I meet other like-minded people. People who've had the same experiences as me. For example, I'm an atheist and I don't meet a lot of those people. And I don't meet a lot of people who like to say that they are and for good reason. Because of this, when I meet someone and they open up to me about that, it's exciting. I get to talk about my experience and my feelings about the subject. And I don't get to do it all the time. I don't like mentioning those things and it's really exciting to be able to experience those kinds of things. I realized that to recreate these types of things, I have to be more vulnerable, which is so hard to do. I hate doing it. I feel like when I open myself up, I could get hurt. But I know that when I do open myself up, that's when I can have amazing experiences and connections. Back to you, Table Topics Master.
Thank you, Samantha. Yes, personalized communication does involve vulnerability and it is wonderful to connect on that one area where we don't expect to connect with someone. Thank you for sharing your story. Personalized communication is audience-focused. Their language, their focus and their goals. When you present to a room full of strangers, people who are different from you in every way. How do you find a language that lets you connect with them? Do you rely on language that is more formal and reserved or more contemporary, consistent with pop culture? Is your diction, your choice of words more intellectual or emotional? How do you use language to connect with an audience of strangers? Shannon. Is Shannon still in the room?
No, I am.
Yes, she is. Okay, thank you.
Yes. It's been a while since I've been on stage in a room full of strangers. But the last time I was, I was in Detroit, Michigan, and I was delivering a presentation that I had many times before. But in this audience, there's all types of people. There was lots of automotive engineers, marketing people. And some of them had only been in their jobs for a few weeks and were coming to learn new information. And others had been in the audience for fifteen years. So one of my tricks as I was delivering information was to start with the basics. One of my biggest pet peeves when someone is presenting information is to present a graph and then not explain the axes. You can't just show a graph and tell people to understand it. Go back to the beginning and explain those core concepts. I would also like to use an analogy of, I'm a lighting designer and I'm going through these steps and when I could explain something really simply and not need to project that I knew everything, I gained their confidence. And if I happened to be stumped, one of my best tricks was to ask the room. So if you get a So if you get a hard question and you're in a room full of people that know a lot, feel free to call on them. They'll feel appreciated. Everyone will get a good answer and they'll have engaged with you more. Thank you. Back to you, Table Topics Master.
Thank you, Shannon. And what a great trick, focusing on the audience and drawing them in, especially when we might ourselves be stumped. Thank you for sharing that. Personalized communication is also what I call assumption verified. Check your assumptions of what your audience does and does not know. We've all heard the term mansplaining, but this is not exclusive to men. We can all make assumptions about our audience that are off the mark. Please share a time when you realized you had to correct your assumptions about your audience and how that turned out. Michael Lee.
Please unmute yourself.
And you're muted. Thank you.
So for a lot many times, I have seen that when I do the presentations and all, I start with the next assumptions. But you know, again, the assumptions are my personal belief, you know. And one thing, the main reason for this communication is sharing of exchange of ideas and thoughts. And there has been a time when while exchanging the thoughts and all, I have come across a situation where I thought, you know, where I started off with the next belief and when I heard the rational or the opinion of the other person, my belief I thought was not true, you know. So it really means when, so in that situation, what I did is like I acknowledged the fact that I, okay, that was something that I always thought and this was my rationale that I was coming up from. But this is a new thought that you have given a food of thought for me to think about and I acknowledge it and I will start thinking in that line. So that has been my approach to the, to handle the situation. Mind me, so I give back to the Toastmaster.
Wonderful. Thank you, Michael Lee. What a great story, using connection with someone else, using where they are coming from to guide us to that common ground. Thank you for sharing that experience. Personalized communication, as Michael just shared, is all about listening. We've heard the saying, instead of thinking of the next thing you want to say, think about what they are saying now. Staying truly in the moment to experience fully what the other person is saying. What tip can you share with the room on how to stay present when listening to someone else? Especially if you would rather assemble your response to what they are saying. Jai Mal.
Thank you, Madam Table Topics Master. That's a good question. Listening. Listening, that means active listening and how to stay in the moment. So when you're back to back in different meetings, you know, coming back to the present is sometimes very hard. And, and like you said, you know, you want to give a response to what the person is saying, but you're formulating the response already, but he hasn't completed. So I feel like being in the moment and having empathy does help. Like if you listen, it's not about who speaks first or who is right and you know, how to inject your answer in. It's all about how to continue the conversation and make sure the conversation goes in the right direction. So basically, you, you want to give an opinion. So you know, there are ways to do it and basically listen to the end and then just continue with that conversation. I see does help. In the beginning, I used to just interject my thoughts. But now that I've grown a little bit older, I kind of like wait and kind of listen to it, be in the moment and use a relaxed approach. Back to you, Madam Table Topics Master.
Thank you, Jai Mal. What great advice. And it is good if we learn to listen better as we age. That is what brings us wisdom. Thank you for sharing. Personalized communication is also organized. Practice and rehearse to be concise, be brief, and to increase your desired impact. Just last night, I shared advice with some event hosts about how accurately posting the time of the events was important. And later, when I watched the recording, I realized that what I had actually said was the exact opposite. I was putting the burden on the attendees to tend to the time. Have you ever experienced someone getting the exact opposite point of what you were trying to make? How did you handle that? And if you haven't experienced that, how will you handle that if it happens in the future? Let's ask Deepa Sashwari. Deepa, are you here? That's okay. We will go on to Meka. Are you in the room, Meka?
Yes, I'm here. So I haven't been like in this situation before. But yeah, if I will be in this situation, like managing time is very important thing. Like being the responsible and be always be on time is, is very important. So, so I, I will advise that we should be always be on time and, and always think that everybody's time is important and we should always appreciate it. That's it. Back to you, Table Topics Master.
Thank you so much for sharing that. I think you have enlightened this room on my behalf beautifully, I have to say. Very well done.
Today's my first class.
Oh, you did. It was great. You did a great job and we're so glad you're here. Thank you for participating. That's awesome. Yeah. Okay, we're going on to one more question or a few more questions. The next one, personalized communication is accurate. To create that personal connection, you must accurately share what you are contributing to the conversation. If your logic is sloppy, your sentence is unreliable, your audience will lose its trust in staying with you and they won't be interested in going to that shared place. When did someone share with you inaccurate information that lacked a reliable source or clear logic? And how did you react? Dean?
Thank you, Madam Table Topic Master. This is a great question. And you know why it's a great question? Because I'm taking a class called Nonviolent Communication. And I'm a very logical person. I'm always saying that there's only a right or wrong answer. But every time I said that, my teacher who's teaching nonviolent communication said, well, there should not be a right or wrong answer. That's the thing with a bad communication because there always a right or wrong answer. So now I guess my question here is now if we're just trying to figure out if something's right or wrong, is that really good? Is that nonviolent communication? According to my teacher, it's not. So what you basically have to do is trying to make connection. And making connection is not about right or wrong. And you know, we have a lot of people here are engineers. They always think about right or wrong, you know, binary. But when it comes to making a connection or becoming a good communicator, non-communication, trying to make communication, he's always saying you can't think binary. You gotta really think, for example, you gotta say, know what people's need are and what they want and be non-binary. So I'm still kind of torn between because I keep on having a disagreement with him on account that we, in reality, there's, it's hard to not be doing nonviolent, sorry, non-binary communication that it's, it's impossible to be nonviolent communicator. But he's, he's trying to teach me that. I'm trying to learn still. Thank you, Madam Table Topic Master.
Thank you, Dean. So appreciate that. And yes, we are all trying to learn. Another thing that personalized communication is, is honest. To truly connect with someone, we must share from our heart. I don't mean we must bear our deepest emotions, but we must be truthful about who we are in that interaction. Using a facade prohibits real connection with your audience. And this is why being genuine, rather than trying to be the person you think your interviewer wants, is more effective when you are in a job interview. Why do you think it is better to be who you are rather than who you think they want in a job interview? We'll go to Chi Mack. Chi, are you here?
If not, I can take it.
Oh, Renee, great. Thank you. Please share.
I just want to make sure I got the question right. In the interview, why is it better to be your authentic self instead of trying to be who you think other wants you to be?
That's exactly the question. Thank you.
People wants to hire someone or a team because they want to hire humans. They don't want to hire robots. If they want to hire robots, they don't need to build, build a hu- human, humanity or society. And that's why all of our personality and authenticity should shine through our interview whenever we try to get a next job. Last time I had an interview, I was asked, Renee, where do you see yourself in the next five to 10 years? You guys probably all get that kind of questions pretty often. I usually have a very good answer. Oh, in the next five years, I'm going to be a VP at this company. In the next 10 years, I'm going to be the CEO of this company. And I frankly just said, I don't know. That was the first time ever in an interview I said, I don't know where I will be in the next five to 10 years. Believe it or not, because I have seen how fast it's changing in the artificial intelligence space, hey, in the next five years, this role that I'm thinking about might not exist anymore. And because of my authenticity, they realize that wow, she actually brought up a lot of good points and great insights about what she knows in this industry in particularly. And then I in particularly talked about, hey, believe it or not, I am very certain where I will be when I retired. When I retired, I'll open my beautiful ballroom dance studio and I will teach elderly people how to dance. And that's me in the grand feature. And that means in the next 30 years or so, I will try to make as much money as possible and hopefully don't have to worry about whether my ballroom studio is actually survive or not. So there, being your authentic self, you will, surprisingly, you will also show your expertise but also add in your own personalized touch to who you are as a person outside of work. And they're a lot more open to connect with you as a person instead of thinking, hmm, is she a robot? Thank you.
Thank you, Renee, for your candid answer. Very insightful. Our last question, personalized communication is taking your own pulse. On the journey to connection, we focus on the other party and we take stock of where we are in the conversation. Is this a conversation we want to have? Do we like where the connection is heading? Are we moving away from common ground? These questions help guide us back onto the path of connection. Please share a time where a conversation started to take a turn you did not like and how you brought it back. Reinalini.
Can you repeat the question one more time?
Absolutely. Can you share with us, please, a time when a conversation started to go in a direction you did not want to follow and how you guided it back where you thought it would be most constructive?
So it's with my ender son. When we talk and when the communication goes beyond the topic and like he goes flow away with some other thing, I have to bring it back to the point. So I think there should be some boundaries for the personalized communication as well. Then we are going drifting away. We have to bring it back by. And that's it.
That's awesome. Boundaries. Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you, Marina Le- Reinalini. We're glad you're here. We are so grateful for every guest who is here tonight and kudos to the brave ones who, who spoke out tonight. Thank you all for joining us in Table Topics. Thank you for engaging in personalized communication with all of us. And I will turn things back to our esteemed Toastmaster, Abhijit.
Thank you so much, Megan. Thank you so much for those amazing questions. I learned a lot from those. Let me introduce our general evaluator for today, Karen Conwell. Karen, it's all you.
Thank you so much, Abhijit. What an epicurious meeting. My palate has been satisfied with all kinds of different flavors and textures and tastes. Ooh, delicious. But what you really want to hear about today is you want to hear, oh, there's a poll right now for Table Topics. So go ahead and vote for that. If you can remember the order of the speakers.
I just shared it in a chat window. Thank you.
Oh, excellent. The orders in the chat window. So pay attention to that. But what we really want to hear from is from the speech evaluators because that's where our speakers get valuable information about how the speech landed on the audience so that they can incorporate feedback and be better the next time. So let's start tonight with Priya, who is going to be evaluating Su Jin's speech.
Thank you, General Evaluator. Su Jin. You gave a very insightful speech about going inward when you can't go outside. We all have experienced very different times from usual. Your start was very catchy and I was hooked on to what you were speaking. You gave, you used some very nice description of the streets getting quieter, the schools getting closed as a result of the pandemic. And how you felt depressed and sad because you couldn't go to work and you couldn't meet your friends and relatives. I think your content of the speech was very good and there was very nice description and use of adjectives in your speech. The areas that I would like you to improve upon is I would like to see more hand gestures. You said you did a five-week course. I would like to see or hear what did you learn each of the five weeks? And how did it affect you? There should be some takeaways that you learned from that session that you had. Your eye contact can improve. You can use vocal variety to display when you are sad, go a little bit low. When you're happy, when you were speaking to your friends, go a little bit high. And you can try to speak a teeny bit louder. But in summary, I liked all your good use of phrases. You said light at the end of tunnel. That was encouraging. You you used self awakening, which was very self awakening for my for myself, but what we learned of going inside our depths. And you came out with courage. So I think you did an excellent job and you used, you described a good communication style. So good luck and well done. Back to you, General E evaluator.
All right. Excellent. We're going to move right on to our next speaker. And Vicky, would you please evaluate Deepa's speech for us?
Yes. Thank you, General E evaluator. Deepa, thank you for sharing with us on your journey of researching leadership and figuring out your leadership styles. I understand this is a Toastmaster pathway topic, but it's such a relatable experience because at some point of our lives, we will have to start thinking about or have to figure out what our primary leadership style is. I would start with what I love about your speech. So first of all, I love that you use specific personal stories to demonstrate how you learned and find out your leadership styles. So sometimes, and for some of us, it is not the most intuitive thing to do. So with you walking us through how your primarily primary leadership style is made through your positive experience with the democratic style versus your negative experience with the bureaucratic leadership style. We kind of, we can follow your trail and try to do the same and apply to our own life to figure out what our leadership style is. I also like that you, I also like your body language and your facial expressions. It might not seem very exaggerated if this is an in-person speech, but I think they are perfect in a Zoom speech. They seem very genuine and very natural. I also noticed that you would pace back and forth to utilize the distance from you to the camera, which add variation to the dynamics of your speech. I like that very much. As far as improvement point, I think in this speech specifically, your vocal variety could be a little bit more prominent. Maybe that would draw us in even more if you amplified how positive the experience with the democratic style versus how negative the bureaucratic style. To recap, I love I love that you use specific personal stories to walk us through a topic that is not the easiest thing to figure out. And I commend you for your natural body language, facial and hand gestures. Lastly, I challenge you to amplify your vocal variety. Thank you. Back to you, General E evaluator.
Awesome. Thank you so much. You know, I learn in these meetings as much from what other people do and the comments that the evaluators give them. You know, you don't have to make all the mistakes yourself. You can watch other people do it and then skip over that part. It's the best part about Toastmasters. Let's move on to our third evaluator. Madhutma is going to evaluate Helen's speech.
Thank you, General E evaluator. That was such a delightful speech, Helen. I have an older sister, but I've always wondered what it would be like to have brothers. And I think you painted a pretty accurate picture for me, especially if my brothers were epicures like yours. There were many good moments in your speech. And I want to mention two of my favorite right at the start. The banging on the table. Oh, wow, that was so impactful. I would have never thought of doing that. That was a very innovative gesture to use. The other one was, you know, when you're holding the crib and like calling out. That was very good use of the space. It was effective. It didn't look forced. So those two were, and considering this was your use of effective use of body language, I think those two were very good use of body language. A couple of things that I thought you could work on was keeping the gestures kind of consistent throughout the speech. I felt like the last portion of the speech could have had some more gestures welcome like between the middle and the last, right? And another thing, there were multiple anecdotes in your speech. It really helped set the picture for me. But I think it would have been pretty effective if you're just focused on two of them to set the whole picture as well, especially the fighting one. I think there's a lot more to unpack there and I would like a whole speech on that. But that was a very interesting anecdote. I want to say the best part of the speech for me is it comes from the fact that you started off with a story about your sister, younger sister banging on the table. And you kind of, you know, concluded with this picture of how they've, you know, all your siblings are grown up, how they've grown up to be now, right? About your brothers being gentle souls. And that was, that was such a touching moment for me and kind of really connected with what you were saying. Not trying to say, you know, they're fighting all the time, but you know, it was a very nice picture to paint. Overall, excellent use of gestures. Things you could improve on was consistent gestures and, and you know, using two anecdotes instead of multiple. Again, the best part of the speech was the content itself and how you painted such a, I should say it was a movie. It was not a picture with all the gestures and it was a great speech. Thank you for your speech, Helen. Back to you, General E evaluator.
Thank you so much. I love this, General E evaluator, job. You get to watch everyone else work. Finally, one more, and we can't miss this because it's going to be very exciting. Kushbu, would you please evaluate Lakshmi?
Thank you so much, Madame General E evaluator. First of all, thank you Lakshmi for sharing all the information about the bananas. I'm sure the entire audience would also be going bananas about the information. I really liked all the props that you used. The turmeric, the ginger, the raw banana, the banana flower and the banana in the end, you know, biting it. I really love that part. That was the best thing I would say that you ended by eating in banana. I was waiting for that banana that when that banana would be coming because it's impossible that you bring so many props and you don't bring a banana. You have to bring a banana. Your content was informative, completed, complete in the sense of having all kind of numbers, all kind of fun facts, like you compared it with tomatoes. Awesome. And how the plant is only giving, that you are using the entire part of this banana tree or banana plant, you know, the leaves, the fruit, the raw banana and the flower and everything you are using in some or the other way. Even the pews are useful in fertilization. That's very informative. I'm sure many of our audiences and members are gardeners. They would be using that now. Your language had great elements like you use that proverb, going, going bananas. Right? I always intrigued by your vocal varieties, hand gestures, body language. You know, your both hands are on work. Sometimes a banana is popping from here or turmeric is popping from here. It's like the entire body is working for you and you're making complete function. I love the ending. I mentioned that already. To challenge you, I would like you to add a fun story around the banana or any other part of that, you know, the entire banana plant or tree, maybe from your child or some other story that intrigues the audience and people can connect with that. I think that would add a more personalized gesture to this story. Overall, very informative content, great gestures, vocal varieties, body language, language, use of grammar such as proverbs and everything. I really liked your entire speech. I thoroughly enjoyed and I'm sure entire audience would have enjoyed it too. I would just challenge you with adding more fun stories to it and we can see further. Over to you, General E evaluator.
Awesome. Wow. Now I get to evaluate the evaluators. That's the fun part. I really liked Priya, the way you gave very specific feedback to people. You know, when you can say, when you said this, I felt this. They really know what was good as opposed to, you know, great speech, which tells you not much, except you liked it. Vicky used very specific stories and examples. And I really liked at the end how you summarized, you recapped very quickly two items. Because that leaves the speaker with, oh, those are maybe the most important two items. So that's a very nice technique all of us could use. Now do you, I don't often hear evaluators give speakers ideas for speeches. But that was really cool, right? Because it's like I'd be very interested in that and you're like, oh, I, I don't know that I would have thought to give that speech, but I could do that speech. So man, that always helps because there's always the day you're trying to go, what am I going to talk about, right? And Kushbu, again, excellent summary at the end of your evaluation to kind of tie how all the pieces came together for you. So I really like that. And I think Avijit, you said we're going to have the timer, put the timings in the
Chat, yes.
in the chat window for the sake of of time. So if you want to go ahead and do that, Samantha, but we definitely want to hear from our aw counter.
Yes, sure. So for our counter report, I counted two uhs from Shoba, from our prepared speakers, Su Jin, I caught a couple false starts. Deepa, two false starts as well. From Table Topics, Mythali, I heard one you know, one ah. Jmal, three you knows, one but, one like, one ah. Mega, two uhs, one Dean, one er. And their last, last Table Topics person, sorry, I'm not, I write the name very clearly. One um. Vicky, our, from our evaluators, Vicky, one false start. Madamita, 21 ums. You broke the record. Kushbu, one right, one you know, and one ah. That's it.
Awesome. Thank you so much. And the day would not be complete unless we finish our palette with Renee, the grammarian.
Thank you. We have one, two, three, four, five. I typed it in a chat window, used the words of the day. Great work. Thank you, guys. The favorite sentence of the day is one of the sentences that Megan said. Personalizing your communication brings you and your listener together, creating shared knowledge space and experience. Wonderful. Almost every single thing that Megan said was quotable. And from the improvement perspective, I would love to challenge all of us to continue to work a lot more on the consistency and parallelism. When do you add s or not s, especially when we talk about bananas? Actually, and some of the run-ons. Because in natural communication, right, that we often don't like to use complete sentences. But since this is an environment to challenge us to do that, I would love to just have us maybe think a little bit more about the run-on sentences. And the last but not least is unnecessary repetition of words in the short amount of, in the short amount of words. And I will send a specific detailed response to every individual person. Due to limited time, I will not go in depth here, but thank you, guys. Back to you, Karen.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Renee. Great job. And I think at this point now, I will be handling it back. Renee's going to change hats really quick and I'll be handing it back to her as the president.
Wonderful. Can you guys see my screen again?
Yes.
All right. I always like to end with a quote. Remember that each contact is an opportunity to make a positive impact, positive impact on others, an opportunity to make an experience real. And that's why we're talking about personalized communication today. We hope to write a blog post to summarize all the learnings today so you guys can continue to come back and refer to the meeting and the learnings. And now we're going to go into a couple announcements. Drum roll, please. Table Topic winners is Jmore George. Yay. One of our guests won the Table Topics. That's wonderful. And we now going to go on to a couple of the social posts and a couple other announcements as well. So for those of you who are first time joining us, I will put this in the chat window. You can find us on Slack, Twitter, Facebook, LinkedIn, anywhere you fancy. And also for paying members, please email Kushbu, our VP PR. She will send you a dedicated WhatsApp link to join our exclusive communication. And for those of you who have not checked your email, I would encourage you to do so because our secretary, Vicky, actually had put together a beautiful newsletter. We learned from all of you guys who had told us that, hey, Renee, we love you, but we don't want to hear from you every single week. So we decided to do these monthly newsletters so we capture a lot of our learnings and activities that's happened at the club. And in this newsletter in April, you will find, you could find the table content and a lot of our competition that happens and also club events from the biweekly meetings to workshops to our virtual happy hour, the upcoming ones, and also a lot of the great blog posts that we actually have posted. And some of the upcoming events are education toolbox and club information. So handy dandy newsletter, take a look at it. It's in your inbox. And we definitely had a new landing page, womanlee TM.com. Take a look at it. We're entering into our PR contest. So lots of great new information for you all. And Dean, I hope that you're still here. We also have started our podcast. So for those who prefer not to read and actually listen, you can find it on this link, listen to our podcast. You also will be able to find it on many of our blog posts. Just click on listen on Spotify to be able to find all of our, listen to the podcast. It's actually powered by AI. It's pretty cool. And we will be entering into the PR award as I mentioned. But for those of you who don't know, we do have our District 101 Conference, May 15 to 16. I highly encourage you guys to register and here is the link. There will be two great days of goodness. And I am also running for one of the division director position. Come vote for me, please. I need all of you guys. All right. And then Shoba, our club mentor. She will also be giving a workshop on Friday, this coming Friday, 12 to 1, and how, on which pathway you should choose. This actually came from one of the members in this club asking, I'm really confused about pathway. What should I do? So come listen to this talk if you're new to Toastmaster. And in May, we have our featured guest speaker Evelyn Lee on vocal variety. So come learn from her. She's one of the great speakers in, in a week. Correct. And I'm not going to go into details about all of our upcoming meetings, but we do meet biweekly for regular meetings and bi-monthly for our virtual happy hours. We have a lot of supplemental workshops on Fridays, 12 to 1, and one feature workshop, the one that I mentioned earlier is for May specifically. And now I would like to open for guest feedback. If you're very, very shy, please feel free to fill in your feedback in this form right here. And for the other ones, if you are willing, if you could come off mute and come on camera, let us know your thoughts. And thank you and good night. Thank you, guys. The officers will stay behind for anyone that like to ask questions. And I would love to ask a couple of the guests to share their feedback. Let's see if we have our guest still on. Hi, Deepa. Go ahead. We have two.
Hi. So I am actually, yeah, my name is Deepa Krishnan. I'm Lakshmi's cousin and I'm so glad she invited me today to the Toastmasters because I think, I don't know why all of you are here. All of you are amazing speakers and Lakshmi, including she's. And Lakshmi, including she showed me a totally different side of hers, which I had not seen. And yeah, I really hope like I do my uhs and ums less, you know, I've started counting on them already. But this is a great forum. I really did not expect it to be like this. You know, I was engaged in all the conversations. Everybody was great speakers. The topics were great. And I think this would definitely stay on with me, being part of Toastmasters.
Thank you. Many of us here in the room, with surprise, many of us in many years to come. And I encourage you guys to continue to stay around and watch our growth in this journey. Lakshmi is just from a couple of weeks, month back. My God, her improvement is just tremendous. Thank you Lakshmi for bringing Deepa in here today. Any other guests who like to share your thoughts?
Yeah, I can. Renee.
Hi, hi, Jamal. Great to have you.
Yeah, I mean, this is awesome. And I, well organized club and I really liked it and I enjoyed the way you structured things. And there are a couple of people that I know in this club, you know, Abhijit, he's, today he's a Toastmasters. So Toastmaster of the day. So it was really good to see him perform that function. Shobha Rao, I do know her, you know, it's awesome to see her do the profile. So I've been in Toastmasters since 2016 and then I took a break and then I came back right now. So I'm currently with Cisco Speaks and then I came to know about Women Leads Toastmaster and I really like it. And what a good day that I just won the Table Topics winner. So it's like, wow, I mean, you know, I spent my Wednesday evening and in a very good way. You know, spending my time with you all, it was amazing. I really liked the session, everything. It was awesome. Yeah, thank you.
Jamal, thank you so much. We hope to see you back at our next meeting as well. Thank you. Thank you. Great job today. Any other guests who like to say a few words?
Yeah, I would like to say. So I was being invited by Kushbu and so Kushbu for me is one person that I follow. She's a great influence for me. She's very positive and I mean, she's got a great opportunities. That's one thing. What I, I have been following Toastmaster Club for a long time, for nine years. I've been searching for one good club and I still haven't found it. But today what connected me to the club was like, you know, the moment I joined, there was an effort from them, from the club to know me, to make me comfortable and all. So that is something that I really enjoyed. I liked it and I felt like it's kind of a tribe that I'm looking out for myself, you know, a place where I can grow. And it's okay to make mistakes, you know, there's nothing to me, be ashamed about, but a place to grow. So this is what I found about this club. So that's my experience. Thank you.
Thank you. If you become our, one of our official members, you do get assigned a mentor as well. We'll look out for your wellbeing and also make sure that keep you on track for the goals that you want to achieve. So we look forward to seeing you in the community. Thank you for stopping by today. And yes, Kushbu is a force of nature and have lots of great positive influence in this community. Absolutely. Kushbu, thank you for bringing, for being so inspiring. Any other guests?
Yeah, this is Lakshmi Nethan. Yeah. So I, I'm so fortunate to find you guys because I was searching Google and I saw the, your club name itself very impressive. So thank you so much for allowing me to join us, I guess, today. I am looking forward to joining you guys soon.
Thank you. Thank you for mentioning that. Actually, a whole roundtable of founding members picked on every single word. Which one, which word do we actually stand for? You should read about it in our About Us page. It's a, it's quite a story.
Yeah, sure, sure. And actually, I, I work for Kaiser Permanente. So I, today only I signed for the, I think KP Thrive Toastmaster Club. But I am pretty impressed with your club as well. So I really wanted to join here as well. So I will send an email to you guys to find further details.
Priya will follow up. Priya is our VP of Membership and are absolutely welcome to be dual membership in multiple clubs. Many of us are in like three upwards of six clubs just to practice like more public speaking. Absolutely.
Sure, perfect. Thank you.
And I think there's a couple more hands raised. Go ahead. Is it Shanti?
Yeah, Shanti. Hi Renee and hi everyone. Thanks for the invite. I have been with Toastmasters for a long time and I'm a competent Toastmaster as well. And this is something I want to try again and join to start off my, um, public speaking as well. I loved the club and the way they organized everything. Usually it's one hour and I'm in central time. So I was like, oh my God, I didn't see the end. So let's keep going. It, it was quite interesting and I loved the way it is organized and you have the timetable, the blogs and all the social medias has been covered so that we can go into any of the media and whatever we like, we can pick and choose from that. And the audio part, the Spotify is awesome. Thanks for all the details. Hope to join soon.
Thank you. Thank you. Great to have you with us. Anyone else? Go ahead, please. Mri, Mri and Alini?
Yes. Yeah, I know Kushbu here. I read her blog on the personalized communication. And that's how I thought, joining you guys today. I really love the way you organized everything. And it's worth to spend this Wednesday evening with you all because I was I was skeptical about joining because I have a little one. So I was a little worried like whether I could join and join you or no, but after joining it, I think I, I took a really good call and thank you for everything.
Thank you. Thanks for taking the time. Taking the time, making the first step is, is just the first little step that you need to make a big move in the future. Thanks for having, thanks for being here with us tonight. All right. Anyone else?
In chat, there is a message from Shanti that she has a lot of questions. So Shanti, you can reach out to anyone of us or you can ask your questions now, is there?
Yeah, the meeting is officially adjourned. So for those of you who need to, you know,